The council will be in session. Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Padilla are here. We have three members present. We need seven more for a quorum. And Ms. Sikowski, we have four members. It's ten minutes after ten. And we have Mr. Burnson, Ms. Goldberg, Ms. Sikowski, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Padilla. We have six members present. We need four more for a quorum. Are you ready? Mr. Hernandez, would you come down here? We've got the Cinco de Mayo celebration. Could we have some... Do we have some attention in the council chamber, please? We do have some presentations, but we're going to start the meeting. But let me point out that this is a meeting of the city council on the fifth day of May, Cinco de Mayo, the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel Thirty-Five, and we're also being monitored by council phone. So with that, I'm going to call on Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Padilla and Mr. Hernandez for a presentation. Why don't we call the row? We have a quorum now. No, we don't. I thought we did.
To ask council member Hernandez and Padilla.
Okay. Just a little... We're going to call the row. We have a quorum. Call the row.
Burnson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Sikowski, Pacheco, Padilla, lead Thomas, Fornish, Dux, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present at quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. The council will come to order. What is the first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Pacheco moves. Mr. Hernandez second. If there's no objection, unanimous vote. The next item?
Commendatory resolutions for...
If there's no objection, unanimous vote. Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Hernandez, and Mr. Ferraro, all Latinos.
Good morning, colleagues. Mr. President, as many of you know, this is Cinco de Mayo, and for us, as Latinos and Mexicans here, it's a very important day. As many of you know the history of Cinco de Mayo, it's a very simple story in terms of Mexico being a territory and being occupied by the French. And at one point in 1862, the French army in full force and effect was at the city of El Puebla, and there they were turned back by General Ignacio Argosar and the people of El Puebla. And that single battle was the motivation and the inspiration for all of Mexico to eventually liberate itself from all the different foreign, basically conquerors or conquistadores, originally with Spain and then with the French. So for us, we celebrate Cinco de Mayo not so much for the battle itself, but for what it means in terms of self-determination and for a people's right to determine their own destiny. Many of you know that this is more celebrated, extremely more celebrated here in the United States than anywhere else. And I really think that comes from the fact of the Chicano movement really embracing this day symbolically for what it represents. As Chicanos, we have seen what has occurred here in the United States in terms of, basically, the southwest region being, in some people's minds, an occupied territory if you talk to Professor Acuna. So when you look at the battle of Cinco de Mayo, you look at Cinco de Mayo, it's really about people determining what's in their best interest, the same values that we all carry in our districts of having our constituents and the residents promote and decide what's in the best interests of their areas. The battle of Cinco de Mayo represents for us a day of celebration and a day of recognizing that we, as a community, will determine what's best for all of us. So I invite council member Hernandez and council member Padilla to add a few words.
Mr. President, members of the council, it's with a lot of pride that I get to stand before you, not only as a city council member, but with my colleagues, Nick Pacheco and Alex Padilla. And they basically represent the political leadership of the Latino community in the city of Los Angeles. And you need to understand that when we talk about the Latino community, particularly the Mexican community, we're talking about the majority of the peoples of the city of Los Angeles. And when we look at the social statistics, we're still dealing with the issues of education because yesterday in the state of the region report, sixty-four percent of the dropouts happen to be Latino. They also make up sixty-four percent of the school age population. You need to understand we're dealing with the issues of health care. One went out of three young people is suffering without the opportunity for health care, and they happen to be Latino. And we're dealing with the issues of housing. So again, I think the three of us represent part of a political change that is happening in Los Angeles, in a city that has a strong history with those communities. And so it's with a lot of pride that I sit here in this Cinco de Mayo with a clear understanding that history is being made in Los Angeles and is changing to a history that is more a reflection of its people and trying to provide the best quality of life for all the people of Los Angeles. And that's part of what this celebration is about today.
Thank you, council member Hernandez and council member Pacheco. And to add just one more item to the list that council member Hernandez presented, to recognize that more than seventy percent of the students enrolled in the Los Angeles Unified School District certainly adds to the significance of the Latino community in terms of numbers and the significance of the Latino community in terms of the future of the city of Los Angeles from an educational perspective and certainly come twenty years from now from a workforce perspective. Like council member Pacheco said, the story and the facts behind the battle at Puebla some years ago on the first Cinco de Mayo serve as an inspiration to people today. And we see the battles existing in housing efforts and educational efforts and so many efforts. Just this morning, the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor recognized, among other organizations and individuals, SIU Local Eighteen Seventy-Seven, the janitors. And we've heard in the news for the last several weeks the struggle that the janitors went through in terms of their strike. And you can say that was sort of a modern-day Battle of Puebla, the modern-day Cinco de Mayo, where here they are a solid working-class group of individuals earning next to minimum wage, if that much. And they took on the better armed and outnumbered, which were the building owners and the building managers. But through tenacity, through determination, and through struggle and unity, they overcame, just like the soldiers overcame many years ago on the first Cinco de Mayo. And so the inspirations go on and on. The struggles and the challenges evolve over time, but the spirit of Cinco de Mayo continues. And in recognition of that and in celebration of that spirit, we're here today with this program. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to council member Pacheco.
Let me also invite all of you to El Pueblo, Calle Alberas, this weekend for our Cinco de Mayo celebrations to give you a little flavor of what we are offering this weekend. We're going to bring up one of our premier young entertainers. Her name is Nidia Rojas, and we're going to bring them up with Mariachi Sol de América. And when they're done, we'll come back and give you a few more bits of information. But let's bring on Nidia Rojas and Sol de América. Mariachi Sol de América.
Viva México, señores! Sí, señor! Soy pura mexicana, nacida en este suelo, en esta hermosa tierra que es mi linda nación. Mi México querido, qué linda es mi bandera. Si alguna lama ansilla le parto el corazón. Que se oiga: ¡Viva México!
¡Viva!
¡Viva América!
¡Viva!
¡Oh, suelo bendito de Dios! ¡Viva México!
¡Viva!
¡Viva América!
¡Viva!
¡Mi sangre por ti daré yo! ¡Hola, muchachos! ¡Con ganas! Soy pura mexicana y nunca me he rajado. Si quieren informarse, la historia les dirá que México es valiente y que nunca se ha rajado. Vi para demostrarse y también la libertad. A ver que se oigan: ¡Viva México!
¡Viva!
¡Viva América!
¡Viva!
¡Oh, suelo bendito de Dios! ¡Viva México!
¡Viva!
¡Viva América!
¡Viva!
¡Mi sangre por ti daré yo! Soy pura mexicana y nunca me he rajado. Si México lo quiere, que tenga que pelear. Mi vida se la ofrezco, que al cabo él me la ha dado. Y como buen soldado, yo se la quiero dar. ¡Viva México!
¡Viva!
¡Viva América!
¡Viva!
¡Oh, suelo bendito de Dios! ¡Viva México!
¡Viva!
¡Viva América!
¡Viva!
¡Mi sangre por ti daré yo! ¡Sí, señor! Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. And on behalf of Fiesta Broadway, I'd like to thank everybody for supporting this wonderful event. It's been our pleasure every year to serve the Latino community, and thank you so much for being a part of it. We're going to go ahead and continue with another song, and it's called... You guys want to hear another song? Yeah? All right. You guys got to clap loud then for these guys. And just for that, I'm going to go over here and sing to you personally. Rebozo, rebozo de Santa María. Can I have a kiss? Nestizas que bailan llenas de alborozo entre los encantos mil de mi bajería. Álvaro la Branca, brocamme en los posos casitas de paja de la tierra mía. Álvaro la Branca, brocamme en los posos casitas de paja de la tierra mía. Does anybody know how to dance? Yeah? Come over here. Hacha manita. Zapato de reso borrado de seda te podría comprar. Ready? Just like this. Ser más gracioso, más lindo tu paso y serás más ágil para zapatear. Let's give her a round of applause. Did a great job. Vámonos a la garana, vamos a ganar lugar. Hoy de noche y mañana tendremos que zapatear. Saca tu terror bonito y tu cinta colorada. Quiero que estés bien peinada pa' que bailes el torito. Can you guys say ole? One more time. Ole! You guys know how to scream? Zapato de reso borrado de seda te podría comprar. Serás más gracioso, más lindo tu paso y serás más ágil para zapatear. Thank you very much.
That was great. I want to thank the kids for getting involved and being a part of the music and doing such a good job. Thank you, kids. We want to obviously thank Larry Gonzalez and Allaxis for helping us bring Mariachi Sol de América and Nidia Rojas. Want to thank her for coming out today and doing this for us. Alex wants to thank some people and so does councilman Hernandez. So let me pass it on.
Let's also have one individual to thank. But in the meantime, we've been joined by a couple of our... a couple of our colleagues in the state legislature, Assemblymembers Gil Cedillo and Tony Cárdenas for today's festivities. I also wanted to thank one of the sponsors of this morning's festivities from El Gallo Giro, Pedro Matar. They've been very helpful in putting this morning's activities together. Thank you.
And I also want to thank La Luz Bakery, who will be part of the sweets that we're going to be enjoying this morning. And keep some of you didn't notice, yesterday when the arena people made a presentation to the council, they talked about a gathering place for 50,000 people. And when Fiesta on Broadway happened this Sunday, there was 500,000 people on Broadway. And so we've outgrown that gathering space already. And we didn't have any problems. We had a celebration again, and that's because of Allaxis and Fiesta on Broadway, a tradition now of Los Angeles. But again, that's the thank yous I did to give.
Thank you, colleagues. And I believe Councilmember Hernandez is going to do a presentation now for one of our individuals from our community that we want to recognize today. Thank you.
Well, before I do that real quick, Mr. President, could Gladys Sainet come up here real quick? Bert, I'm going to use you to grab everybody's attention, but I have a real special recognition for one of my staff people that I just like, would like to make. And it's Gladys Sainet. She's basically my administrative executive at the office. You don't see her because she handles all of my work. But she's celebrating 25 years with the city of Los Angeles. And I just thought I'd recognize that. She doesn't look it, but this is Gladys. And this morning, she showed me the pen, and I said, Gladys, you're not supposed to recognize yourself. What happens is the pen was sent to your employer so he could give it to you. And I just wanted to recognize it because she's been a tremendous asset to me. And again, she's always one of those people behind the scenes that makes things work in the office. Thank you, Gladys. Members of the council, and this morning, I think we all celebrated, we're celebrating what I believe is the empowerment of the Latino community as part of the Battle of Puebla in the city of Los Angeles. And we have some state legislators, but as you know, our numbers continue to increase. But the issues have to change. We have to educate our children. We have to provide housing. We've got to have healthcare. And it's a tremendous responsibility on our shoulders that we have to work towards on a daily basis. And we're real proud of our elected officials and the fact that this opportunity is coming. But this morning, I was talking to someone who knows much more about these battles. And I talked about, we're like that spring that people have been compressing down, but it's getting ready to pop up. And when it pops up, it's going to really improve the quality for everybody in Los Angeles. And that's been part of the work. And I kind of saw him misty eyed sitting here because who I want to recognize today in front of all of my colleagues and all Angelenos in the city of Los Angeles is someone who's been close to me since I was in college, a role model. I have a college, ex-college mate who's here from Sacramento, Luis Cespedes, came down from Sacramento. But when I told him we were recognizing Bert Corona, he wanted to be here. And Bert was one of those visiting lecturers who would come and talk to us as a social worker. And there's a book that's called Memories of Chicano History: Life and Narrative of Bert Corona. And you need to understand that Bert's battles began when there was very few of us in a position of authority, in a position of, I mean, he was fighting for farm workers before Cesar Chavez was in the movement. He was part of the original organizing of El Congreso and working with organizations like CSO and trying to get young men elected who are part of coalitions like young Eddie And the reality being that those battles were being fought at a time when there wasn't a cadre of elected officials and people in positions to get people elected to office. Council President Faro a little bit earlier said, you know, I told him, isn't it nice to see the three of us together? And he said, well, Latinos got to stick together. How come I wasn't up there? And that's the spirit, that we all have to work together on these issues. But there are individuals who stood out there by themselves, whether it was representing, putting together a defense team for the Zootsut Sleepy Lagoon defendants, or whether it was trying to empower communities by organizing them at the grassroots levels. And Bert Corona, I asked him how old he was. He says 82 years old. A tremendous history of activism. And I just want to share my history with him because I met him in college, but then I was dealing in the immigration business. I used to write immigration bonds as part of our business. And Bert saw me down at immigration. He asked me if I'd come speak to some potential legal residents. And I said yes, because Bert was asking. What he didn't tell me is that I was going to have to drive to Paris, California to do this. And I remember driving to Paris, California, asking myself, why am I doing this? But I'm going to go talk to some immigrants who want to become legal residents. And I drove up to this school, and I walked into their cafeteria, and it was packed with people. And I talked to them about their rights as immigrants and the process of legalizing themselves, and then the process of citizenship. Well, then I met some of those same people years later, when I'm in public office, at a conference, except now they were school board members and city council people representing Paris, California. That was the circle. And see, his latest movement has been with an organization called Ermandad Mexicana. And they've been dealing with the issues of healthcare, dealing with the issues of day laborers, dealing with the issues of housing and trying to change communities. Not in a high-profile position, but struggling day to day trying to get bureaucracies to understand what they're about and why they do what they do, just to improve the quality of life of those people who normally most people don't pay attention to. And that's the kind of man we have the opportunity to recognize today on Cinco de Mayo in the year 2000 in the city of Los Angeles, Mr. Bert Corona.
Ms. Goldberg, Ms. Goldberg.
I just wanted to add my, add my note of congratulations and also to say that Bert Corona has influenced untold numbers of people to become activists, to remain activists, to be involved in change in a positive way in communities. And he's been doing it for more years than we would care to describe because we do not wish to embarrass him. But he has always seen himself as a teacher, and a lot of us have learned at his knee, learning from him that you must reach out to people, that you cannot ask anyone to do anything you would not do yourself, and that if you stay the course, eventually, eventually, change must come. And I am very proud to have had a long association with this gentleman, whom I admire tremendously and whose example I try to emulate in some small way. Thank you.
I just wanted to recognize all the contributions that Mr. Bert Corona has done for our community and for myself as a graduate of UC Berkeley, where they tend to take politics a little too lightly. And someone who got his degree in not only religious studies but Chicano studies, I do want to thank Bert personally for contributing so much to our history and giving me something to read and be inspired by. So thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez earlier displayed this book, The Life and Narrative of Bert Corona, and there's a lot in there to read and learn from, from his early days as not only a community organizer but a labor organizer. And that's evolved into his involvement with Ermandad Mexicana, dealing with issues of housing, dealing with issues of healthcare. And my personal experience and relationship with Bert was interesting. In 19, my entree into electoral politics was in the year 1994, 1995, volunteering on a few campaigns. And in 1996, heavily involved in my first campaign with a state legislator standing behind me. And it was also that year that Ermandad Mexicana Nacional came under the spotlight, under what many believe was undue scrutiny for some voter registration activity down in Orange County. And some people say, why are you bringing that up? That's a little controversial. I'm bringing it up because it's important. It's important to recognize that there was, A, no wrongdoings ever found, but B, here we are in the city of Los Angeles, talking about how do we increase public participation? And we've had some very heartfelt debates about charter reform and making government more accountable and providing opportunities for people to participate. We've had debates as to the future of neighborhood councils and really giving people more of a voice in the city. We're not even crawling it as the city of Los Angeles when it comes to engaging and enfranchising people who need help the most. Yet we look at Bert Corona and the organizations and the movements that he has led, and we see shining examples of exactly how to do it. People, communities that were written off, that were forgotten about, that were discounted, Bert and his cadre of lieutenants and soldiers have gone out there, day after day, night after night, year after year, and now for generations, and have engaged, have trained, have taught, have led, and truly have empowered. So from this young man just starting a career in politics in this country, I thank you for the inspiration, for your accomplishments, for the example that you have laid for me and many others to come. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Wax and Mrs. Waller would like to say something, so.
Members of council, I just want to put you on notice that you'll be able to do more than have accolades for Mr. Corona and more than have plaques and certificates. Hopefully soon, we'll have a financing package for a project that they are seeking to redevelop on Sherman Way and the 13,000 block of Sherman Way, and they're actively seeking financing now, and we're supporting that from the city's end. And so hopefully at some point, we're going to be bringing you a package where you can vote for some money as well as for, as well as a certificate for an incredibly good project of a mixed-use project in our area.
I assume I've recognized. Thank you, Mr. President. I was upstairs watching the proceedings on the monitor, and Bert, when they were talking about you, I said, I've got to go down and say hello. When I look back on how long I've known you, it sounds like a horribly long time, when I think it's a quarter of a century, but I met you in 1975 on my first try for public office. And I developed an enormous respect for you. And of course, I knew your history because you'd been in the papers and you'd been such an active person in the civil rights movement for so many years, such a rich history of fighting, not only struggling for the rights of Latinos in this country, but also for African Americans and other minorities. I think you just are a living legend, and your work has been tremendously beneficial to society as a whole. I'm very pleased and proud that I've had the opportunity to know you, and I wish that someone would put together, you wrote a book at one time, and I wish there would be another about your work for young children so that they'll know, and something for these younger generations who may never have heard the name Bert Corona. It should be on the lips of everyone. The best to you.
We, Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to recognize Assemblymember Gil Cedillo and Assemblymember Tony Cárdenas, who graced us today by being here, but they came because, not because of the council, but because of Mr. Corona. And I'd like to give them the opportunity to say a few words. The Honorable Gil, Tony Cárdenas.
I don't know if you're allowing us to speak because the budget goes downhill from Sacramento to here or what, but...
Just remember, just remember you represent the city of Los Angeles.
That's right. I remember that every day, and I look forward to bringing home some good goodies for all of us, or whatever anybody wants to call it. If it will permit me, I'd like to share a few words in Spanish with Mr. Corona. En breve, te queremos mucho, te apreciamos. Has hecho mucho para nuestra gente y para todos. Eres un hombre, pero has afectado las vidas de millones de personas. Gracias. Hay un dicho del libro más importante en el mundo, y dice: Buen hecho, mi serviente. I just wanted to make it brief and say, this man is owed much, but he never asked for anything, except maybe a project. But a project to feed people, a project to clothe people, a project for others, not for him. And I shared with him my appreciation that we owe him so much. He's been so dedicated, and he's affected the lives of millions and millions of people. And he epitomizes, in my opinion, a very simple phrase from, in my opinion, the most important book ever written. And it says, "Well done, my good and faithful servant."
Mr. President, the Honorable Gil Cedillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council members. I really appreciate what you're doing. But I appreciate it for the city of Los Angeles because when we acknowledge and recognize someone like Bert Corona, we really acknowledge the best of what we all try to be, public servants, and we acknowledge the best of what we hope that everybody will be in our great city, and that is, they will participate, that they will engage in the process of civic participation. And no one epitomizes that more in this great city than Bert Corona. His history, which is much documented in this book, is really the history of Mexican-Americans and Americans in the states and in the Southwest. And it's amazing because at every chapter, you're reading decade upon decade upon decade of the development of California and the Southwest. And Bert is amazing because he was there in every instance. And I think Jackie said it best, not only did he motivate many of us to become activists, but what he did more so than that is he motivated us to remain activists, that he made the point that you could have a rich and very fulfilling life by being involved in the betterment of your community. And I think that's probably his greatest contribution both to the state and to this country. And as Tony said, for that, we must all be thankful and grateful to Bert Corona. Thank you, Bert. I'm going to open a present, I'm going to open a present that I have for Bert, for him from us. Bert is the reason that I took a shortcut to...
One minute.
...politics, Mr. Faro, because I spent a little brief career in the labor movement thanks to Bert.
We have another Hispanic that wants to speak, Nate Holden.
But just to show you, we have a picture here that's in the book of Bert Corona, Frida Carlos, Diego Rivera, and the muralist secretos, just to show you how important and significant this man has been to our history. And so Bert, thank you, gracias.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for giving me one minute of my time. I saved two for later on. I just want to say that there's a lot of love and admiration been expressed for Bert Corona, and he deserves it all. He's a man that came into my life nearly 40 years ago, along with another good friend of mine, I'm sure of his, Frank Lopez. Remember Frank? And when Frank Lopez or Bert Corona spoke, we all listened. They were the frontline soldiers to advance the cause of not only their community that they represented, but the entire city. We loved you then, we love you now, for all that you've given and then asked nothing in return. Bert, right on. We earn your coattail. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to introduce everybody, Mr. Corona, for a few words. Mr. Corona, thank you.
Thank you so much. First, I want to thank each and every one of you that is present here today. I want to thank all the officials selected and appointed that I see here, that we have known each other for many, many years, and that some very worthwhile accomplishments have taken place because of your presence, your presence here, and your willingness to take on the challenges that have faced us all. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Today is a great day in Mexico, and I would be really passing by a great opportunity to tell you about my family. I remember as a youngster, five, six years old, that on the sixth, on the fifth of May, we used to consider it like the Day of the Dead, that we would not eat all the goodies that we were supposed to be getting, capirotada and the post Easter goodies that Mexican families cook, because my grandparents were not Roman Catholic. They were congregationless, and they believed very strongly that Protestants had the right in Mexico to exist and to multiply and to preach their faith. And so they used to have a version of Cinco de Mayo that it was a struggle for freedom of religion as well, that all religions could be recognized and brought up on high as being worthwhile. And I say this because in those days, and I'm talking about 1875, 1865 to 1875, was a great struggles to bring about religious freedom and equality in Mexico. And the essence of Cinco de Mayo was that, that here was a city, a town, that was being, that was being besieged by one of the most powerful armies, in fact, the most powerful army at that time on the face of the earth, the French Imperial Army of Napoleon III. And they had the city closed down for weeks and weeks and weeks, and it got to the point, and this is a story that was told to little children in our church and in our schools, that, that people only had rats that they could capture to eat, that there was no food for the people who were in the besieged city of Puebla. And nevertheless, in spite of all those difficulties and that hunger and so forth, the Mexicans won. Well, I would be also bypassing a very important thing. Great-grandfather of my wives, General Carlos Pacheco, led the fight of the Mexicans inside of Puebla against the French. And on the outside, a great-grandfather of mine led the fight of the northern troops, the rebel troops against the French, General Villagrana, who was on my mother's side, a linear great-grandfather in fighting the French. So it was in honoring these fine gentlemen, these great heroes of Mexico, and honoring the people who were inside of Puebla to withstand the hunger and the oppression that the French sought to bring to us. There are people who say the French gave us a lot. They gave us a lot, but they took away more. You know, they took all the gold that they could lay their hands on and so forth, but we appreciate the relationships with the French. We're very, 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 we're very, very grateful that they left part of their culture there, but we're more grateful to those men and women of that period of history, of Mexico's history, that stood up and fought until victory so that Mexico could be free again. So this is how I view the Cinco de Mayo, that we see it as a struggle of very, very poor people, a very, very poor country, against the imperial hosts of Napoleon III. And so it is today that we have individuals that carry on the tradition of their parents or their great-great-grandparents. There are many, many Mexicans and Mexican-Americans here in California, in Los Angeles, who are descendants of those men and women who fought, who died, who sacrificed themselves for the war against the French, for the war against the clericals, for the war, for the revolution, and then of course in the World War, World War II and Korean and Vietnamese War in the present time. So I'm very, very grateful to the City Council of Los Angeles. I'm very, very happy to be here. I've known many of you for many, many months and years, and I appreciate your great sacrifices. I appreciate everything you're doing, you're trying to do to make Los Angeles better. And I can only say that, that many of our hopes and dreams that we've had throughout all these years that some of you have mentioned are being realized because of the support of everyone who is in this council and because of the leadership that these young men, particularly young men, have, have given to our cause. And I just wish that we can continue to improve and bring the, the ills of our society out in front so that, so that we can deal with them and we can wipe out the abysses of poverty and ignorance and illness and so forth. I'm sure that Los Angeles will be a great, great world-type city because of the Mexican people here.
Mr. President, it wasn't planned that way, but I think now you have a feel that Cinco de Mayo is more than a weekend sponsored by a beer company. And it brings out something in us, it brings out the united force, and I thank Bert Corona for his explanation of that history. I just want to read that the resolution basically says, Bert Corona, a longtime community labor leader in California, has dedicated his life for fighting social and economic injustice for both Mexican and working-class people. And then I'll skip all the whereas's and betweens because they talk about all the organizations that you were part of, but I want to end it by basically saying, now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Council of the City of Los Angeles does hereby honor Bert Corona for his courageous leadership in the Mexican-American community and pays tribute to his legacy as an individual who has enriched and empowered our community by resisting social and economic injustice. And it's signed by, I'll say, the four Latinos on the council, not only myself, but Councilmember Alex Padilla, Councilmember Nick Pacheco, and of course, the Council President John
Thank you again, council and assembly members, and again, our congratulations, Mr. Corona. Well deserved. The next presentation will be Councilwoman Goldberg, followed by Councilwoman Galanter. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg for a presentation.
Mr. President, Mr. Varnich and colleagues, I ask Councilmember Goldberg if I could jump ahead for, for significant reason. Today we are recognizing an individual as part of Cinco de Mayo, who, as we just heard from Bert Corona's words about the struggles and the other individuals with struggles in our community, well, one of the other things that complements all of our lives is the arts and what role they play in our community. And there's nothing more significant in the city of Los Angeles than what many people call the people's canvas. And basically, that is the sides of buildings that people have donated and allowed artists to paint murals on. And one of the great muralists in the city of Los Angeles is with us today, someone who has captured and reflected many of these struggles in his artwork that the Latino community has gone through. I want to bring up Frank Martinez, who's one of our premier muralists here, and talk about the fact that Frank started his career very early in World War II, when he was documenting the events of World War II, including the Norman invasion, to the point that the army recognized his brilliant talent and sent him to the prestigious London Art Institute to enhance his already God-given skills. He also studied at the Chenard and Otis Art Institutes. Mr. Martinez has used his artistic talents to document the development of the Chicano movement in the 1960s and 70s. He is recognized as one of the earliest contributors to the muralist movement here in Los Angeles. His brilliance is accurately, is inaccurately portraying the cultural richness and positive spirit of the Latino community, and he has inspired many young Chicano Latino artists in that movement and in the development of public art, because as many of you know, not everyone is in the position to have a private collection of art, and our murals are our public art. Mr. Martinez's gift to all of us are not only his murals, but the way he's captured and represented our history and teaching our children and teaching everyone the need for our unification in the struggle against all injustices. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, signed by the now-famous Latino Caucus of Pacheco, Hernandez, Padilla, and Ferraro, I say, be it resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the Council of the City of Los Angeles does hereby honor Frank Martinez for his gift of art that inspires us all to learn about our roots and celebrate our contributions to the history of our culturally diverse country. Thank you, Frank Martinez. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I present this to you.
Mr. Martinez indicates he's very emotional, but we'll have him say a few words.
I want to thank the City Council of Los Angeles and through the people that made it possible. I want to thank you all. I'm sorry that I can't add to that at this specific time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg?
Thank you very much. Let me just add a historic note on Cinco de Mayo from a North American point of view. That particular battle, had it been lost in Puebla, would have certainly had a dramatic effect on the outcome of the American Civil War, which was going on at the time and which the French had seriously considered trying to capture, use the opportunity of the American Civil War to try to capture southern parts of the states of the United States for its growing empire, and the people of Puebla certainly had a dramatic effect on the outcome of, of the American Civil War at the same time. Just a little American, North American historical note. Let me invite up the boys and girls from the second and fifth grade from the Pilgrim School located in the Council District 13, and their teachers and other adults who are with them. Would you want to come up here, boys and girls? Come on. I invited them to come in because I wanted to tell you how proud I am of how the second and fifth grade students chose to spend Easter this year. They assembled and decorated 86 Easter baskets for children at the L.A. Shante AIDS Hospice on La Brea Boulevard. The baskets were picked up by Ella Hill, a program associate in the PLUS Program, which helps women with positive living. The hospice children, as you can imagine, were very excited to get the baskets. This was a new undertaking for these students at Pilgrim School. All the supplies were donated by teachers and parents, and they included baskets and stuffed animals and books and games and toys, and of course, jelly bean and eggs. And we'd like to recognize Ms. Rosalynn Evans, a second-grade teacher at Pilgrim School who organized the activity. The most valuable lesson the students learned was the value of giving. Ms. Evans said there was no selfishness. They had a great spirit, and their hearts were full of love. And so I'd like to ask Ms. Evans and whoever, who, Ms. who here is? Ms. Castillo? Ms. Castillo?
Ms. Khan.
Mrs. Khan and David Louie to join us up here.
Ms. Goldberg, I think you should remind the young people that this will be rebroadcast at 7:30 tonight, and they can watch it.
You can watch yourself on television on Channel 35. That was good, Mr. Ferraro. Thank you very much. We needed, we needed that. And we want to present to you at this time...
Oh, they're going to be, they're going to watch it on television tonight, 7:30.
In a minute, in a minute. In recognition of your service to the people of Los Angeles, your dedication of heart and hand to the needs of friends, neighbors, and fellow members of our society, this certificate is a small measure of your devotion of service to the people, and it's presented to the Pilgrim School on behalf of, in recognition really, for bringing Easter to children at L.A. I had a chance to meet with these lovely youngsters just before we came to council, and they ask extremely interesting and intelligent questions about the city of Los Angeles and how it is run. And so I want to welcome you all here and to thank you very much, boys and girls, for being so quiet and for participating in the Cinco de Mayo part of our celebration here as well. Thank you very much for coming down. Gerald, where are you? Ron, would you help them find their way into the line? Okay. My second presentation is to present the Career Service Awards. Is Sharon Schuster here? Where are you, Sharon? Are you here? Oh, I saw you. I knew I saw you. Okay. As you know, the Civil Service Commission President Sharon Schuster, it will make some opening remarks. Mayor Reardon was scheduled to present the plaques, but it had an obligation that has taken him away from being able to do so. So we'll start with you, Ms. Schuster, and then I have a few opening remarks, and then we'll make our presentation.
It's my delight to be here today on behalf of the Civil Service Commission, the Advisory Management Council, and of course, the Personnel Department, which is represented by our general manager, Ray Allen, to have another wonderful event, to be able to honor city employees for their service to the city. In a day and age when unfortunately the misdeeds of the few get recognized by the public, we are pleased to be able to recognize and honor the wonderful service of the vast majority of city employees through our awards to just a few. of city employees through our awards to just a few of the exemplary employees that we have in city service. We have many, and we use these awards to provide a goal that all may reach toward and to thank all for their wonderful service. So now, Councilmember Goldberg will present.
Thank you. First, let me just remind everybody that these awards were instituted by the city of Los Angeles in 1971 and began with the idea that well-deserved recognition should be given to outstanding employees. The awards continue to be very important as they represent one of the few ways that we, as elected officials, can acknowledge the important contributions of dedicated city employees. The first Career Service Award will be presented, well, as I call your names, please join us at the podium, to a group of people, actually. Ernestine Burley, Milton Harrell, and Aura Heath from the Department of General Services. Ernestine Burley, Milton Harrell, and Aura Heath are being recognized today for going above and beyond the call of duty. They put their lives in danger in order to extinguish a large fire in a building they were cleaning, and thereby not only averting a major financial loss to the city, but protecting property nearby from the possible spread of that fire to other locations. And this was not a part of their job description, I can assure you, but they saw the need to take care of something that was happening right then and there, and without asking whether or not this was other duties as assigned, they jumped in the fray and took care of the problem, and we are very, very grateful to them and commend them for their heroism. And maybe we'll do it here. Ah, with them is the South District to honor them. Would you stand up and recognize your colleagues? All right. Now, I know about this rivalry, so I'll just say, "Go, South District," and we'll leave it at that. All right. The next is also two people, and that's Luis Capone and Vicky Israel. Would they come forward? These two women are credited with bringing Los Angeles' only outdoor ice skating rink to Pershing Square. Due in large part to their hard work and their efforts, their creativity, and their tenacity, Pershing Square has become a focal point for family entertainment, for businesses, and for residents alike. And some people said, "What? Ice in Los Angeles? No way." They didn't think that they could take "no" for an answer, and as a result, we have a really exciting venue downtown that would probably have happened in no other way. We are very proud of you and congratulate you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to Ms. Goldberg that I'm glad that she has enjoyed the holiday on ice skating in Pershing Square in my district. And as I have said to council members before, Mr. Rodney Collins in our office had conceived the idea and worked to, with the CLA to get the funding for that idea. And certainly, the two ladies that you honor have been involved. The one, and her name escapes me right now, came to us after the first year of the project and has worked in Pershing Square generally to, and not just related to holiday on ice. The other young lady, I couldn't see who she was and didn't hear her name. But that was a project from start to finish of CD9 in CD9, conceived and executed by Mr. Rodney Collins and the CLA, and we're very grateful to both of them.
Well, thank you very much for that additional bit of information. I have a script here, and I'm reading right from it. So I will continue to do that. The Fire Department, next, for a Career Service Award, has Gail Fariger. Did I pronounce that right? Fariger? Fariger, Fariger. Gail Fariger is a 31-year employee, although I don't, 32-year-old employee. That must be her age. It can't be how long she's worked for the city. Not only has she used her keen sense of department history and protocol to help keep the administrative office run smoothly, but she has devoted countless off-duty hours to the organization of fire department events, and so she is receiving one of Los Angeles' prestigious Career Service Awards. Thank you very much, and we congratulate you, and obviously surrounded by some of her colleagues.
As you can see by the cheerleading section here, Gail is more than just an employee to us. She's a special person. As Councilwoman Goldberg mentioned, she literally grew up on the department. She married Jim, one of our firefighters, and her brother is a firefighter, paramedic for us, and she's been with us for 32 years. We're gonna sorely miss her, and we hate to see her go, but we know she's gonna be around because she's gonna come back to see her family. Thank you very much.
Today's her last day, she said. I think this is an appropriate recognition then, and we thank you for all of your really lifetime years of service. Wish you very much well in retirement. From the Police Department, we have Vivian Flores. Sergeant Vivian Flores contributed greatly to the success of the Blythe Street Project, which aimed to decrease crime in her area and improve the quality of life for citizens in the community. Of primary concern was the ongoing problem with the Blythe Street gang, which was responsible for a lot of the crime in the area. Sergeant Flores traveled door-to-door, working with both residents and businesses to increase awareness of the problem and to help deal with it and to bring some much-needed change to the area. And for that, she is receiving a Career Service Award, and we are very proud of you and grateful for your efforts. Captain Ackerman, you want to say something?
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Bob McNamara, commanding officer of Van Nuys Area. Into every area commanding officer's life, some employee positive light falls inevitably, and some of that light is bright and some of it, again, is brilliant. And in the year and a half that I had been privileged to serve as the area commanding officer at Van Nuys, Vivian Flores has been that brilliant light. I think you need to know that she almost single-handedly turned around a problem in one of the worst-crime-ridden areas in Los Angeles, and particularly the Valley, and her efforts were absolutely relentless and tireless. I'm honored to be here today to support her and to encourage her to continue in her efforts now that she's a sergeant, and I'm a little dismayed at that, to be honest with you. We have to move her on, of course, but I wish Vivian all the luck in the world in her career development.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add a few words about Sergeant Flores. The Blythe Street area is in my district, and we had the opportunity to meet last year when we were dedicating a pocket park, which was just one of a number of steps that the whole Blythe Street community was taking and bouncing back as a crime-ridden community. In the last couple of weeks, you've heard me talk about Haddon and Mercer many, many years ago, and Orion Street and Langdon Street, and in between that time, we had to read too much about Blythe Street that we didn't need to read about. Well, the reason Blythe Street is no longer in the newspapers is much due to the work that Flores has done along with the community. Everybody's quick to point out that, yes, Vivian was central and led the charge, but worked hand-in-hand with residents and a lot of the community-based organizations there to turn that community around. So I also wanted to thank her on behalf of the entire council district.
Next, from the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Street Services, Shirley Nah. Shirley Nah worked tirelessly to make the Los Angeles River Bike Way Project a success. The project included adding an 800-foot section on the channel slope undercrossing of the Glendale-Hyperion Bridge. Despite financial problems and obstacles, Ms. Nah was able to bring together various city departments and outside organizations in order to finish the project before the scheduled date of completion. We always like to hear that news. So for your efforts in this and also for all your other efforts in the Bureau of Street Services, we are proud to honor you with this 1999 Career Service Award from the city. James B. Lee, Police Department. With his own cheering section, obviously. Wow. Well, James B. Lee has been instrumental in overseeing the successful completion and implementation of major projects for the Police Department, including the planning, organizing, and directing of the conversion of several manual processes to automated systems. Now, not the kind of thing you usually get wild cheers for, but obviously, he did it in a way that made it accessible to everyone and involved everyone's views and how it ought to come out so that people could use it, and it would be user-friendly when it was completed. And for these efforts, and obviously on behalf of all your colleagues back there cheering for you, I am pleased to present on behalf of the city this Career Service Award. Congratulations.
I'd hate to tell you how many years Jim and I have known each other. I remember over 30 years ago, meeting him in RNI. He spent his entire career there. He's been one of the most positive and powerful leaders there. He's been creative in dealing with oppressive workload and high vacancies rate, and he and his people have done a marvelous job, and I think this reward is not just for him, but for all of his people as well.
The people here in the back are the now-famous R9 Division. Finally, we have Marilyn J. White and John Dunlop from the Department of Recreation and Just Marilyn White? Okay, Marilyn White. Marilyn J. White is the creator of the Raise the Barb Program, the first comprehensive gender equity program for a municipal recreation and parks department in the United States. Unfortunately, Mr. Dunlop, who also participated in this, cannot be with us, but we also recognize him for his efforts. This program, as you know, came out of discussions in the city council and many efforts, of course, of Mr. Fuhrer's office and other offices in the council, but we want to recognize these two individuals within the Recreation and Parks Department because a good idea needs implementation, and how things are implemented very often spells success or failure for a project. So for those reasons, we want to thank you and to award you at this time the Career And I'd like to thank my colleagues from the Personnel Department and from the mayor's office, and obviously from the Civil Service Commission for their assistance in this presentation. Thank you very much. Next group is the Quality and Productivity Commission's honorees for the Productivity Improvement Award winners, and I'm gonna actually turn this over to you because there are all those children in the back waiting for me, so I'm gonna ask you if you would take this over, and I'll join you momentarily.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, and thank you, Councilmember Goldberg. It is a great honor as Chair of the council's Governmental Efficiency Committee to continue to highlight the awards that our Quality and Productivity Commission has given to a variety of innovative programs in the city. And today, we are recognizing the Department of General Services, and the General Manager, John McCray, is with me, for two, not one, but two outstanding programs. The first one is called "Preserving the Value of Black Gold." Black gold being engine oil, automotive oil. And I think, are we ready to show the video? The video is...
Black gold, Texas tea, oil. It's the lifeblood of the vehicles we use every day. Fleet Services Division of the Department of General Services maintains and repairs over 9,000 pieces of city equipment, including the maintenance of our fleet of 550 refuse vehicles. These trucks service 720,000 households each week, and their stop-and-go operation places heavy demands on their engine oil and on the engines this oil protects. Oil changes on such a large fleet require a significant amount of time, and these refuse vehicles use 29,000 gallons of oil and 860 oil filters annually. Fleet Services personnel realized that if the number of oil and filter changes could be safely reduced, this would result in a significant reduction in scheduled maintenance and hazardous waste disposal. The team, in partnership with the engine manufacturer, tested the performance of a new type of extended oil filter on several city refuse trucks. If successful, this filter promised to reduce engine oil and filter changes by 50%. The test indicated that no identifiable signs of engine wear or performance difficulties resulted from the use of these extended service oil filters. The engine manufacturer was impressed and agreed to honor their engine warranty for city refuse vehicles using these extended oil filters. Congratulations to GSD's Fleet Services Division for their creativity and innovation, resulting in a 50% reduction in used oil and filter disposal, more efficient utilization of maintenance resources, and annual savings to the city of $152,000.
I'm going to turn the mic over to John McCray to honor all of the very innovative city staff that are standing at our side.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Too often, I face all of you in budget hearings, and you always ask me, "Where is the money going? What are you gonna spend it on? What programs?" And you're always asking me, "Do you have enough money?" The answer is, no, we're underbudgeted, it seems like. We're under-resourced sometimes, but because of the innovations we have imposed on Fleet, we are able to make our money go farther. One thing I learned as a manager, and I will turn it over to Alvin Blaine, who, Cruz should get credit, is a good manager lets his people do their work and knows when to get in their way and when to get out. And on these two events, I got out of their way, let them move forward, make the changes, save the city money, and do their work better. So I want to congratulate them because I'm working for them in this case, and Alvin Blaine, our Director of Fleet, will now make the presentation introduction.
Thank you very much. It's quite a pleasure to be honored here, but like John said, it's not me and it's not John. It's all the employees of Fleet Services, and this is just a sample here, and I'm very proud to introduce them. Dave Wilson, Victor Martin, who's the superintendent, Gerald St. who's the superintendent, Gerald Sanange, Leonard Walker, Mario Martinez, Richard Colson, Gary Bentavina, and Randy Brown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. And another innovative program, also from Department of General Services. This one is called Knowledge Gained Through Wisdom, and it's about General Services maintaining and repairing over 9,000 pieces of equipment for the City. And this peer training program you're about to see on the video provides a cost-effective method for continuing training needed to maintain this equipment, reduces travel costs, better meets the needs of our city mechanics, and saves over $60,000 a year for the City. If we could see the video on this one.
GSD's Fleet Services Division is responsible for the ongoing maintenance and repair of over 9,000 pieces of city equipment. With the introduction of complex onboard vehicle performance, control, and safety systems, continuing education becomes a high priority for city mechanics. Sending staff to maintenance seminars is costly, and commercial training programs often do not meet the need for specialized training services. In response, Fleet Services Division has implemented a peer training program. Fleet Services peer trainers are city mechanics with specialized training and background in areas such as automotive electrical systems, hydraulics, heavy-duty transmissions, air brakes, forklifts, cranes, safety, commercial fleet terminal inspections, and Class A and Class B driver training, to name a few. These peer instructors often teach after hours in our local regional occupational centers and junior colleges, provide real-world experience for city mechanics on the latest systems and techniques, and tailor courses to meet the specific needs of our mechanics. This outstanding program provides improved training with reduced course and travel costs, nearly eliminates waiting lists, coordinates more closely with city schedules, and saves the City over $60,000 annually. Congratulations.
So, I'm going to call the two same gentlemen up because this is, again, another program from Fleet Services, General Services Department.
Thank you again. Not only do I get questions about budget from each of you, I'm always asked, "Do we train our individuals? Do we train our employees? And what have we learned and are we passing that knowledge on?" In this case, anybody who's been a backyard mechanic for the last 15 years realizes they can't fix anything anymore. We can't do it. And with 9,000 vehicles, you can imagine all the systems that we are responsible for repairing and the complexity of these systems, and they're changing daily. This group of individuals realize that. They stepped to the forefront. We're starting to train our employees onsite on all these complex systems, and if you have not been out to that site, I encourage you to go. It's very impressive. And I'll turn it over to Alvin, and he can now introduce these employees.
Once again, I'm very proud to introduce these individuals because they do work very hard any hours of the night. John Kidwell, Mike Burns, Karen Kundif, Tony Nguyen, Al Carlson, and Don Corrigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson?
Mr. President, members of the council, it's my pleasure today to present a pin to Viola Andrade of my office for 25 years of service to the City of Los Angeles. Starting with Mr. Snyder's office, right, and then when Mr. Snyder left, she moved over to a real high-class office, Council District 12, and she's been invaluable in dealing with managing our office. And I can't begin to tell you how difficult it is dealing with somebody like me, but... Viola has managed it, not to mention some of the other staff, which are even less responsible. But anyway, Viola, it's my pleasure to present this pin to you and to thank you for all you've done in helping not only me, but the people of 12th District. Thank you. Want to say anything?
I think I should start, Mr. President, by thanking my honorees for their patience. I... Come on up close here. This is, it's my pleasure today to recognize an innovative business in the City of Los Angeles. They also have a branch in another city, which will remain nameless, but they are in the City of Los Angeles. This is Cleaner by Nature, what we used to call a dry cleaner, but what they do is something called wet cleaning. And the reason we have them in here today for a Good Earthkeeping Award is that Cleaner by Nature has pioneered a new technology for taking care of one of those mundane services we all need and all hate to pay for, but they've managed to find a way to do it with, that's less toxic. It doesn't use the kind of, I can't pronounce that, perchloroethylene, also known as PERC, not the kind we're familiar with. That's a kind of nasty solvent that is traditionally used in the dry cleaning process, but by going to this wet cleaning process, they don't have to do that. And so, they use a new, non-toxic alternative, which prevents pollution, reduces the chemical stuff in the air, reduces the exposure of the workers to chemicals, and allows them also to make money, I hope. They've also launched, in addition to the basic technology, they've also launched a number of other programs to demonstrate their commitment to environmental conservation and protection. For example, their delivery vans are powered by natural gas, which reduces air emissions, as we know. They store and collect metal and plastic hangers for reuse and recycling. They promote this program by giving away free hanger caddies, so you can remember to bring your hangers back, and they won't collect in the backseat of your car, as they do in my car. They also collect the plastic garment bags for recycling, the ones that the grocery bag people won't take, they'll take. And they use bags made from the old bags. They save about $250 a month through their reuse, waste reduction, and recycling programs. And they also serve as a donation drop-off site for a nonprofit organization that provides clothing to people who are re-entering the workforce and who have, having not been in the workforce, didn't have the money to buy clothes. They reuse their waste paper as note paper. I hope you're all paying attention to this because we could do this, too. They use electronic bookkeeping to reduce the use of paper. They use products made from recycled materials, and they reuse the plastic garment bags that they don't recycle as trash basket, trashcan liners. So, we are very proud of Cleaner by Nature because they serve as a model for the dry cleaning industry and for other industries in helping us meet our target goal of 50% diversion of waste from landfills by the end of this year. And I am joined today by Deborah Davis, who's the owner, and Randy Ellebold, who's the sales manager, and I want to present you with a Good Earthkeeping Award from the City of Los Angeles to Cleaner by Nature for all the good work that you do. And Loopy probably wants to say something. No? Okay, you get to say something. And thank you for your patience.
No problem. Thank you very much.
You want to talk about what you do?
Yeah, I'll take just a minute. Just very briefly, I wanted to thank the members of the City Council. Councilmember Galanter, thank you very much for recognizing us. The air in Los Angeles isn't great, but it is better than it's been in 50 years, and that's in part because of what we're all doing at the level of the city, individual businesses, and even individual people. We can all do our part to help improve conditions here in our environment. And I just want to thank the City Council for taking the time to recognize what we're trying to do at Cleaner by Nature.
Thank you. I just want to say, too, that just going to work each day, it's a great opportunity for me to, and the people that were not able to be here because they're actually back there doing the job for us. We get to come here and accept this award, and I appreciate that, and thank you, and thank you, Ruth Galanter. But I wanted to say, it's really a nice feeling to go into work and you go in and do a job, and you also are doing something that's good for the environment and good for the City of Los Angeles. So, thank you very much.
Oh, all right.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Galanter?
All right, wait, I have one more. Hold on. We're going to do the picture over here because there's a traffic jam in the room in the back. So, we're going to do the photograph, and then I have one more thing.
While you're waiting, are you waiting, Ms. Galanter?
No, I'll be right there, Mr. Holden.
Okay. Finish, or then we'll call on Councilman Nate Holden.
Well, thank you. You can just wait. Let me finish my presentation now. I appreciate your consideration, Mr. Holden. Where's Monique? Mr. Padilla, you want to join me up here? Where is Monique? Oh, there you are. This is kind of a strange event for me because this is both a farewell and not a farewell. I'm sure you all know Monique Abackerly Kagan of my office, who's worked for me for about four years, bringing order out of chaos in the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee and doing a number of other wonderful things within our office. We're joined here, we have a whole bunch of my staff people here because I'm going to get a little emotional about this. We're about to let her leave. Alex Padilla has lured her away with the promise of what he claims is going to be a better job. We'll see. We'll see. Monique is about to start as Alex's Chief of Staff, and this is a great move for both of them. It's not so hot for me, but it's a great move for both of them, and I'm very proud of Monique's work in my office, and I have to commend Mr. Padilla on his fine judgment. And I wanted to take the opportunity with a number of the members of my staff, her cheering squad here, to thank Monique in public for the work she's done for CD6 and the entire city, and to wish her well in Alex's office. And now, I'm going to cry.
Alex, you're next.
Thank you, Ruth. I won't praise Monique too much yet. She's starting on Monday.
I told you she can come back.
So, but certainly, the, her performance and the whole office, Council District 6, certainly leads me to believe that we're on to some great things in the future in the 7th Council District Office. Monique and I started talking not too long ago, but one of the toughest parts about the last 10 months for me has been to talk to Ruth about how the heck we were going to do this, or if it was okay, and respecting not only, not only my selection of Chief of Staff, but our ongoing relationship as colleagues. And the one surprise that I think brings a lot to Monique's background and her participation in my office is her background in the Northeast Valley. I'm privileged to say that, consistent with the majority of my staff, she was raised in the area, and her family as a whole has been involved in the area, so she knows what she's getting into, not just in City Hall, but in the 7th Council District specifically, and we're looking forward to a whole lot.
And one of the things we didn't, neither of us bothered to tell Monique is that when you become Chief of Staff, you have to improvise. And so, Monique, you have to say something.
Yeah, they didn't tell me they were going to do this today. So, I just want to say it's been an incredible honor to work for Councilmember Ruth Galanter. I have enjoyed everything I have done here, and I've learned a tremendous amount from Councilmember Galanter, who's a very knowledgeable, very strong, very courageous woman. So, I'm looking forward to imparting that knowledge on to Councilmember Padilla and helping out with the goals that he's trying to achieve. And I really want to thank the staff of Councilmember Galanter. Adi Lieberman has been a tremendous Chief of Staff, and I've learned so much from him, and really appreciate all the guidance and independence he gave to me. And then, of course, the staff, which is just an incredible team. You guys are amazing, and we have accomplished a great many things, and we did it together as a team, and we always worked consistently together. So, you guys are great, and I'm going to miss you. And I also wanted to say thank you so much to some CLA staff that were just incredible to me and the staffing of the Commerce Committee. The first one is Christine Y. Hollis. She's just tremendous, and she's been my backbone, and Paul Wang, and Avak, and Jerry Miller, and of course, Ron Deaton, who put up with a lot of my badgering during the years. So, thank you so much, and I'm going to miss you, Ruth, too, but I'll be right down the hall.
Yeah, I feel like my kids are growing up. Thank you, Mr. President.
And, Mr. Deaton, the badgering will continue.
Okay. Should we take up some city business now? Mr. Holden, I'm going to call on you because I want to hear, I want to hear you make a 20 or 30-minute speech.
Oh, no, no, no. That time has come and gone. This is very short and sweet. Last shall be first, and first shall be last. Nancy, would you come over here? Mr. President, members of the council, and to the entire community, Nancy Hernandez is going, is right now, has a tremendous future, leader of tomorrow. The work that Burke Rona did, and Frank Lopez, and each and every one of you, Mr. Hernandez, talked about his contribution to the cause as well. You have no idea about what's wrapped up and spring-loaded, as you put it, Mr. Hernandez, and Nancy Hernandez. I met Nancy at a health fair at West Angeles Church about two years ago. She approached me and said, she was not working at the time, but she was a student at Santa Monica City College. She said, "What do you do?" And I said, "I'm a council member." She said, "I like the way that signs. I want to take your job. I want your job." And I said, "What do you know about my job, Nancy? You've got to know the job in order to do the job." She says, "Well, I'll learn the job and I'll take the job." I said, "Okay, I like that spirit." So, I gave Nancy an opportunity to work at my office, which she took advantage of. And she was just yesterday notified that she's not going to be transferring to UCLA, not USC. Give her a big hand. Now, this lady, I got to tell you, is smart. She's brilliant. She's hardworking. She doesn't ask for anything for free. All she's asked for is an opportunity to do a job and to be successful and to achieve. So, I just wanted to take this time to introduce you, and you are a role model, to the general population about how you can get the job done for an individual like yourself and for the entire community that I know you will represent well in the future. You just want to say a word, so I know John is going to give you three minutes, but just take 30 seconds.
Oh, well, I just want to say thank you to you for giving me an opportunity, and I appreciate it very much. And it's opened many doors for me, and I just want to say thank you. And thank you for giving me this time, and that's it.
Don't you want my job, Steve?
Now, go to work.
Of course.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to say, Mr. Holden?
Shall we give her the perfunctory warning? John?
No, Mr. Burnson. Okay, the next item.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Items 1 and 2, 7 and 8, Building and Safety has advised those matters can be received and filed.
There's no objections. unanimous vote.
Item number 4, Council District 6 has requested that be continued to July, excuse me, June 6.
There's no objections. unanimous vote.
Items 6 and 9, 10, 11, and 12 can be continued to May 9. City, excuse me, Building and Safety has requested that.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 23, Mr. Wax's office has requested that matter be withdrawn from the agenda and referred to the Department of Transportation.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
And the City Attorney has advised that the two closed-session items today, item number 29, be continued to May 9.
There's no objections. unanimous vote.
And item 30 may be continued to May 10.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearings, items 3 and 5, our confirmation of Building and Safety assessments.
Anybody in the audience must be heard in 3 or 5. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items 13 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 16 has two ordinances on the file, one with an urgency... Item 16 has two ordinances on the file, one with an urgency clause, one without. You may want to call that special.
You can take it out of order if you want to, Mr. Savernich.
Mr. Savernich moved 16A. Okay. Anybody, any specials besides, well, 16A, any specials?
16, A.
No, we're, you're not calling it special, you just wanted to move A.
No, I just wanted to call it special.
Oh, okay, well, we may take it up on Tuesday, then.
Okay.
Next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to vote on those 13 through 19, with the exception of 16?
Yeah, 13 through 19, with the exception of 16. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 20 through 28.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on any of those items? Have no cards, seeing none, the public hearing is closed, any specials by councilmembers?
24D.
Huh?
27.
27 is special.
24D.
24D. And 23, Mr. Wax has asked that we ref—
It's already been acted on.
It's been acted on, okay. It's been referred to committee.
They screwed up still, excuse me.
Okay, we have 20, 21, 22, 25.
Well, 24 with the exception of D.
Yeah, 24 with the exception of D, 25, 26, and 28. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved.
And 28, please.
Fourth with on 26, and 28, and 19. Okay, then. And 25, fourth with. Next item.
Item 16 called special.
All right, Mr. Savernich has moved that we adopt A. Now, that's, this was a second reading ordinance, I think somebody who called it special also voted against it last week, and he said he wasn't gonna speak very long, and I'm gonna give him one minute.
Mr. President, members, I think it's important to note that we did obtain some more accurate information regarding the rates. I think what was presented to the council before was significantly misleading. We have approximately 2,000 cabs in operation. The meters are calibrated by the County of Los Angeles Weight and Measures Department. They not only calibrate the cabs for the City of Los Angeles, but also for the cabs in other parts of the county. You might be not aware of the fact that the cabs that we put our seals on, they sometime are allowed to serve 100% service in other communities, that when the weights and measures calibrate those meters, that sometime they're not the same, because the rates are not the same, and yet, they can have two seals on the cab. Now, maybe you guys are aware of that, and maybe you were not. At the time that they received their major increase was from 1979, they were getting $4.08 per five miles. 1986, they were getting $8.70. So, they got about a $4 increase, that was due to the fact that the oil prices had gone up then, and they came in complaining about it, so they made some significant adjustments. Those prices were due to excess profits, as you recall, when Jimmy Carter put that on the books, and additional monies came in. And that's when they went up almost 100%, and the fee that they were charging the general public. Since then, however, the gas prices have not increased, they were about $1.55, $1.60 in 1987, 86, 87, when this took, 81, 82, when this took place, and now, I just checked the pumps just yesterday, and you'll find at Washington and Los Inoga, $1.55, $1.67, and $1.77. The prices that were just up for a short period of time does not warrant, nor do they justify spending this kind of money on an increase. Even the commission, as more, as liberal as it has been with this industry, has raised some concerns about the excessive rate. You would also be, like to know, that we're number five, and this would put us, we're above, right now, as it stands, Chicago and New York charge less, Detroit, less per five miles than Los Angeles. With this rate, you get the very top in the nation, so, and there's really no justification for it. It's very excessive, look at the rate that's been provided to you, and you can see that Los Angeles, as it stands right now, is ahead of New York, ahead of Chicago, ahead of Detroit. With this increase, you're gonna be like number five in the nation, and I think that the, well, I had three seconds left, but now it's over. I still don't think that this is warranted, especially under the urgency clause, it's excessive.
Your time is up, Mr. Holden.
Okay, go ahead and do it.
Mr. Savernich?
Move the previous question.
Prepare the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes. Excuse me, 13 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Okay, next item. When are we, now we vote on?
You have 16A before you.
16A. Prepare the roll. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, two noes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Thank you, Mr. Holden. You said you were gonna vote for it. Yeah, yeah. Next, next item.
Item number 24D called special by Mr. Pacheco.
Simply call 24D to move the amending motion on 24D, Mr. President. This is an amending motion.
Okay, we got 24D, what does it do?
It is a special event, and we need to include certain streets for the Million Mom March on Mother's Day, and so, there were some streets omitted in the original motion, so we need to amend it to include Alameda Street and—
This is a Million Mom March on Mother's Day? You're stealing Mr. Holden's Mother's Day. Prepare the roll. Prepare the roll on the amendment, on the 24A, D as amended. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 27 called special by Councilmember Ms. Sikowski.
Which one? Which one?
Item number 27.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have the staff come forward, this is the police department staff, CLA, city attorney, members of the council, perhaps the most important element of the Christopher Commission reform that we had not yet implemented, and the one that the Department of Justice is most concerned about, is what we shorthand call the risk management capability. We had had problems in initiating, or executing that contract, with problems with RFP, problems with consultants, et cetera. We, last March, I mean, last month, the end of March, asked for an expedited process. We now have before us a status report, I would like to have the staff present an update on what we are doing in terms of being able to implement this.
Good morning. Police Department, working, I'm sorry, I'm Captain Mike Moore with Management Services of the Police Department. A working group at the direction of the City Council was formed, that included myself, as well as members of CLA, city attorney, ITA, and CAO. We set out to, as directed by the council, identify a vendor that would be suitable for this project, and to do so in the most expedited manner possible. We, our actions began with reviewing the RFP requirements, and we met with each other and discussed what we believed this contract should accomplish, and attempted to identify vendors that we felt would be able to accomplish it in the desired period, which was less than six months. Part of the process involved us traveling to Pittsburgh and reviewing the risk management system that was recently released there, and meeting with the vendor that accomplished that task. Based on the success achieved in the Pittsburgh system, and its similarities of, and with the risk management system in use by the Sheriff's Department, the working group interviewed, like our strategic solution, which was a vendor for the Pittsburgh system, we opened contract negotiations with that company, and today are here to report that they have entered into the contract with the department. At this point, we are scheduled to meet with them, given, well, we're scheduled to meet with them this Monday, to begin our first working group session in accomplishing the details of the definition of Teams 2. We expect no further delays. The department has, in an effort to support the effort, or this project, assigned two police officer threes to work full-time on this project, and we are also requesting additional resources, that being a supervisor, sergeant 2, a senior systems analyst, and a clerical to help us maintain this expedited schedule. At this point, we'd like to also recognize that we need to have some office space, and minor office equipment that the CLA's been very helpful in supporting us identify. At this point, also, on behalf of the Chief of Police, I'd like to thank Ron Deaton and his staff, as well as the city attorney and the CAO, for their support and assistance in fast-tracking this process. As a reminder to the council, I believe this action took place on March 29. It's been a long and arduous process to identify a vendor, but in less than 45 days, we're back here, I believe, with a successful definition of a contract, as well as an effort that'll be accomplished. The department looks forward to completing this project, and, more importantly, aggressively pursuing funding of, and committing whatever energy is necessary to attain a state-of-the-art risk management system. It's vitally important to this department, as I believe it is to the city and its citizens, that the department have a truly effective and proactive risk management system, so that we can properly manage and understand our risk situations.
Mr. President, let me just add that item 27A is a motion that I've introduced with Councilmember Furor and Councilmember Laura Chek, which does follow up with what the working group has presented. The working group has signed the contract, we had authorized the chief to enter that contract with the consent of the working group, that has been done. This is the follow-up to authorize the resolution authorities to appropriate, appropriate money for furniture, staff, and equipment, and to negotiate the leased space. It also does direct that the department, the CAO and the CLA, will report back to the Public Safety Committee in July, so we will have an update about what they're doing. But it is, it does need to be fast-tracked, we acknowledge that, we have heard from the Department of Justice that this was the single most important thing that we could do within our LAPD that had been recommended by Christopher Commission, and we're now getting it on track on an expedited manner, so I move 27A.
All right. Is there any discussion on that? We have 27A before us, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Now, we have 27 as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
Mr. President, you have a special one on the desk, it's a motion brought in by President Farrow, and seconded by Mr. Burnson, the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Okay.
Turn ahead. I'm sorry. Mr. President, councilmembers, in order for this council to consider the motion presently before it, it's necessary that a finding be made, that pursuant to the provisions of the government code and the rules of the City Council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for the action came to the attention of the City Council subsequent to the posting of today's council agenda.
Yeah, well, that's okay. Okay, prepare the roll on the findings, I think we're about through. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now, we have a special one before us, it's a reward. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Now, special 2.
Special 2's a motion presented by Padilla and Ms. Sikowski.
Mr. President, members, in this motion as well, the one posted by Councilman Padilla for the posting of a reward, it's necessary that, under the rules of the government code and the City Council, that there is a need to take immediate action, and that this need came to the attention of the City Council subsequent to the posting of today's council agenda.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Now, we have the matter before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next item. Huh? I already did that.
Mr. President, you also have a special meeting, do you wish to, a recess from the regular meeting, go into the special meeting?
Well, let's do the public comment period, we don't have any cards, anybody wanna be heard on public comment? Seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Is this gonna be very long, Mr. the special agenda?
No.
Because—
No, it's not. It shouldn't be more than five.
We're teetering on a quorum right now.
I understand, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, then, we'll adjourn the regular council meeting, and call the roll for the special meeting.
Burnson, Chek, Furor, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Sikowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Lee Thomas, Winters, Wax, Walters, Farrow, 10 members present at the forum, Mr. President.
Okay, the first item on that, the only item?
Is a presentation by Building and Safety relative to the El Mercado project.
Okay.
Mr. President, before Building and Safety starts, let me introduce the item today. As you know, in October of last year, I came together and presented a plan, which was basically a plan forced upon both the community and the property owner, after much work in my office, and what we did was compromise on a number of issues, where neither the community got everything they wanted, or neither the property owner got everything they wanted. But one of the most significant things about the plan was the fact that the vendors were gonna be out for six months, and the property owner was gonna get a certificate of occupancy, which is, the building had lacked since 1972. So, I wanted to report back where we were, and what the anticipated steps would be in the plan. I will report back that the vendors did, as a sign of good faith, on November 1, 1999, leave El Mercado, and work with us to make sure that the conditions of, the compromise of the plan were met. That Mr. Rosado did, and Building and Safety will give us a thorough report in terms of acquiring his certificate of occupancy, did provide us with upstairs bathrooms that were ADA compliant for women on the third floor, and will be working on some men's bathroom. And also, we did, he did comply with all the key conditions on the new P1 zone change that occurred on that day. We're also, the vendors did sit down with the property owner and participate in the design of 20 puestos. We did have several community meetings, which I will report that we had one community meeting attended by approximately 200 people, where the public comment was roughly 2 to 1 in favor of El Mercado continuing, and that the vendors returned. We also worked and made sure that no one did any retaliatory action on either side, and that will give me an opportunity to give you an update on an unusual development that has sort of circumvented our process, and has caused us a little bit of heartache in terms of moving this along. Originally, when we presented that the vendors would be gone for six months, it was very, it was made very clear to everyone that in the return, they would be going through the variance process, and although technically not within compliance with the zone, that during the variance process, that we would accommodate them in that location, so that they can complete the variance process and continue to have a livelihood, and we were going to make sure that the variance process moved efficiently and officially through the Department of Planning, which it is. They have had their first public meeting on May 1 for the variance process. The administrator left the opportunity of comment open for individuals from both the community and the vendor, or the applicant side. Unfortunately, prior to my being a councilmember, there was a lawsuit pending from the County of Los Angeles and the community. The court acted on the lawsuit after the plan was put in place. Without any notice, to my office, or working with my office, there were some residents who went to court and retained. One of the causes of actions was ruled upon, the other four out of the five were rejected by the court and dismissed, but the one cause of action that was ruled upon, Mr. Rosado's property, was permanently enjoined from allowing vending on the ramps if they were not within the zone. That has thrown a monkey wrench in the whole process, it's unfortunate that they didn't work with my office before making that, taking that step. The vendors know that if they return to the ramps as contemplated in the plan, that they will have to deal with some litigation at the county level. They are aware of that, they've discussed it among themselves. I understand they may be returning even with that development, and proceed under our plan. And now, I'll turn it over to Building and Safety, who has worked so hard with us, and I want to commend Mr. Andrew Edelman. I want to commend Mr. Andrew Edelman, Dave Keim, and David Lara for working with us. Mr. Edelman.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmember. On this Cinco de Mayo day, I am extremely pleased to share with you that after 25 years of various notices and violations and issues at the El Mercado market, finally, we have issued a certificate of occupancy, both for the parking lot and the building of the El Mercado. Specifically, last Friday, the Building and Safety performed the final inspection and issued a certificate of occupancy last Friday, actually, to the day within the six months from the time that this council directed that that action be taken. I want to thank the staff of the Councilmember Pacheco and Councilmember Pacheco for their leadership, and quite frankly, weekly, sometimes twice a week, meeting to move things forward and bring this lengthy situation, which has gone on for 25, 30 years, to a resolution. And myself, Mr. Keim, and Mr. Lara are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Okay, this is just a report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Edelman and Mr. Pacheco, and, uh, any other thing before the special meeting? Okay, the special meeting is adjourned. Anything else before the council?
Motions for posting and referral.
Unanimous vote.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused May 23rd and 24th. City business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Goldberg requests to arrive on Wednesday, May 10th, 11:30. City business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
The desk is clear.
All right, we have adjourned motion. Mr. Burnson has one?
Yes, I do.
Would everyone please stand? Everyone please stand.
Mr. President, members of the council, I deeply regret that I'm asking that we adjourn in memory of Ray Hudson. Ray was president of the Mobile Home Association in Solmar, a member of my Citizens Advisory Committee for many years. Ray was probably more responsible, or certainly one of the individuals responsible for fighting for the rights of mobile homeowners, which are mainly senior citizens. And at one time, when I first came into office, we're not protected by rent control, they did not get any of the types of protections that we offer to renters in other parts of, other types of housing. Ray came to my office, I think, right after election, maybe it was right before election, and we discussed it. And he's been a friend, and he's certainly been a friend and a assistance to the people who live in mobile home parks throughout our city. And I have 18 in my district alone, just to give you an idea, and many of you also share those. So Ray will be sorely missed. He's survived by his wife Dorothy and two children. And Ray, wherever you are, I want to thank you for all you've done, not only for me, but for the people in our district and throughout the city.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Are there others? Councilwoman Goldberg?
Yes, it's with great regret that I ask you to join me in closing this meeting today in memory of Luis Zaragosa. He was born in 1972. His family is, lives in Bellflower. He was a Herrick Company employee working on the Hollywood Highland Project. An accident occurred on April 29th that took his life, and he will be much missed by his family and friends.
Thank you, councilwoman. Are there any others? Councilman Pacheco?
Counsel, colleagues ask that we join, adjourn in memory of Cora Lavis Mendez. Ms. Mendez is survived by her son, John Mendez, who for a long time was the field deputy for the Bow Heights area for former Councilman Art Snyder. His mother and their family have been active in the Bow Heights community for over 50 years. I just wanted to recognize that they have been great contributors to the well-being of our community, and want to adjourn in her memory.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Padilla?
Thank you. I request to be a second on Mr. Hudson's tribute. I got to know him starting in 1995, when I was first getting involved with politics, and, you know, he was very active and involved, not only locally, but with Golden State Mobile Homeowners League, as well on a statewide basis. I'd also ask that we adjourn, I don't believe we've done this, in memory of Cardinal John J. O'Connor, who passed away a couple days ago in New York after a battle with brain cancer. He was 80 years old, and the spiritual leader of the 2.4 million Catholics in the New York Archdiocese, and is certainly one of the more recognizable and influential leaders of the Catholic Church.
All members. Councilman Wax?
I too would like to join in Ray Hudson's adjourned motion. We worked with him for many years on a wide range of issues. We had rent control issues, we had planning and zoning issues, we had utility issues. And they were complicated, and they were difficult, and we worked them all out greatly with, with his help, and it affected a lot of people. Many parts of town don't, don't have mobile homes. We have quite a few in our district, as does Councilman Burnson and Councilman Padilla, and they're a source of housing for a great number of people, particularly the elderly. And there are people who are in vulnerable positions because they don't really have options when, when they're located, and so they can be taken advantage of. And they fought very hard for the, for the people to make sure that it is maintained as a lifestyle for a number of people who choose that, and it's a valuable part of our housing component, and he'll be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Any others? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Here's wishing everyone a happy Cinco de Mayo and a wonderful weekend. This council is adjourned.